I'm hot.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Julie, we're good?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Whitehall City Council meeting of December 21st, 2021. As is customary, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to make one comment before we move into our roll call. For anybody that will be coming forward poll public or any presentations this evening, I even request that everybody does keep their mask on. With the rising COVID numbers, we want to exercise extreme caution, and I know it's been a case in the past where we let speakers take those down, but tonight we are going to go back to full-time masking. So thank you, and I appreciate your assistance with that. Ms. Ott, would you please call roll?
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
I thought Larry and Chris were going to say present for us.
Present.
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 Also present. At this time, we have the approval of the December 7th, 2021 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, would you like to move for approval of minutes?
Second, there's been a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for the approval of the December 7th, 2020 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Ms. Ott, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This now brings us to our first poll public this evening, and as is standard by the rules of council, anybody who wishes to come forward, you'll have three minutes, and you do need to state your full name and address for the record. I do know we have one letter this evening if we... or we can start with...
And also to keep my mask was joined in 498 Flag Roll. I've been moved by Ohio. I wanted to come tonight. I don't represent any title, and I've represented in the past, but I've come tonight as president. And I wanted to come tonight particularly for you, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Rodriguez, and thank you for your service. My husband and I, with our young family here in Whitehall, we didn't really, you know, understand the community, and many of you, Mr. Miller, you know, all of you really welcomed us, were welcome arms. And the Bible talks about a righteous man. I believe you are a righteous man, and you represent everything that I believe that Whitehall is, and either was in the past, in its stability and integrity, and I just wanted to commend you publicly, sir, on your service, and thank you so much. When we came here a hundred and thousand years ago, I don't know, I was in my 15 years, I've been here, you watched our children grow up. So I wanted to thank you so much because that warmth and grace was the very thing that we needed as a young family, and you also assisted us in the cultivating us into the culture of Whitehall, allowing us to meet new people, and again, that cannot be replicated. I would hope that this new conversation, as you all work together, that, you know, we really replicate the legacy of you, sir, as well as Mr. Miller, Mr. Morrison, and this is your last day as well. Thank you all so much, but particularly for you, I just wanted to publicly come here, again, not representing any professional title that I stand in, but to thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Ott, would you like to read the letter to...
Yes. Jeff Thoeburg, 466 Maplewood Avenue, Reflections of 2021. On February 9th, council approved money to fund a doomed-to-fail project, Prevent Backflow Vow. It was actually an epic fail attempted at a remedy. At the May 18th council session, it was, "Uh-oh, here comes Clay Cooper." On July 20th, council declared that residents weren't paying their share of the sewage bill. Then we celebrated with the Truck Fun Fest, where Auditor Kinsey Otto's truck told us tiffs aren't performing as intended. The emergency meeting on September 14th to give the enclave to the electors was a dud, unlike June and July citywide firework booths. No blocks were discharged. Then we had the main Maplewood zoning issue on our ballot to decide, "No, wait, that's only a fleeting memory." We did have that council seat flip hands in Ward 1. We had come out and meet Woda Cooper events, where citizens could understand that council gracefully deferred to Clay Cooper any obligations they felt to explain their roles in the enclave themselves. We had the Get Zoned Up event filled with copied dump text that featured sex industry zones and pictures showing future Whitehall streets that made Easton look like town and country. We had the 12-9 Planning Commission meeting starring Zach, where we learned Wodas paid for study, found no reason for concern because the enclave residents will all be working and dealing in their cars at different times of the day and night. Can I leave you with a foreigner song lyrics, "Urgent Emergency"? Whitehall can do better. There's a growing list on my hard drive that agrees. Thank you, and thank you, DSCC, for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Does everybody else like to come forward? Please.
Mayor Magg, members...
Name and address.
It's coming right after that.
Okay.
I promise.
Okay.
Mayor Magg, members of the council, good evening. My name is Jackie Plank. I live at 771 Robinwood Avenue. I wanted to start by thanking Jason of OHM Advisors and City Administrator Zach Woodruff for making themselves available for a town hall meeting on November 30th at the request of several citizens. At this meeting, the commercial corridor zoning code updates were explained in detail, and the residents' questions were heard and answered. Several of us expressed concern regarding the potential height and setbacks of future buildings along the north side of Main Street bordering the residential neighborhood known as the woods. After email and in-person meetings, this specific concern was addressed in the updates presented to you this evening, while they will be presented to you this evening. It is my hope this kind of communication and effort continues to produce positive outcomes in the future. Allowing the citizens of this city to have a voice and express concern is vital to our forward progress as a city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Anna Pennington, and I drive a car through Maplewood Avenue in my home. I feel compelled...
Can you please give your street address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you please give your street addresses?
I'm just dead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't hear the...
I feel compelled to publicly state the following. While I and others remain vehemently opposed to the office's largely four-story modern building being placed at the apex of our near historic woods, I am cautiously pleased with the efforts made by Mr. Woodruff in calling for key changes in Woda Cooper's plan. This is resolved not in the win-win we all hoped for, but at least a win doesn't satisfy the scenario in which all people of Whitehall who feel some comfort that their efforts were fruitful in forcing city halls occupants to take this seriously. It is my fervent hope that going forward, when the citizens rise up en masse, a serious and fruitful pause will occur in a strong effort to actively listen and take action to appease us. I know that would certainly make the blood pressure and medicine doctor happy. So in closing, kudos to Mr. Woodruff, kudos to our comrade Jackie Plank, and particularly kudos to the citizens of Whitehall and rising up and making themselves heard. Our hope is that this has given everyone some hope that we can make a difference, and not simply hostages that must comply with various issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Council President Pott, members of council, I speak today at behalf of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. Thank you.
I'm sorry, name and address.
Franklin 360 South Oak Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the chance to speak. I want to thank you for your consideration of the source of income ordinance. This measure will allow you to join the cities of Beckley, Columbus, Brentenburg, Worthington, and Westboro, declaring that discrimination has no home in Franklin County. In doing so, Whitehall stands among 19 states and over 100 local municipalities who have adopted similar housing protections, which now cover an estimated 50% of America's most vulnerable residents. In Franklin County, 54,000 households came within half of their income per calendar. In some regards, the housing landscape of Whitehall is more dire than the county in large. This year, 12% of all Franklin County evictions emanated from one of the zip codes associated with Whitehall, representing almost 1,700 families. Given that Whitehall only contains about 7,200 households in total, that means as many as 23% of all Whitehall families receiving eviction notice this year. In fact, the 43213 zip code was the third highest eviction geography in our county, following the link on my Eastland and Northland neighborhoods. The local housing wage, what it would require for a worker to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment in Whitehall, is now $18.03 per hour, yet in Ohio, only one out of our 10 most common jobs that the registered nurse pays even close to every. Without help, safe and sanitary housing remains out of reach for many Whitehall residents. It is of course true that the source of income ordinance will not fill more housing, but our swelling housing crisis cannot be solved by construction alone, and we must ensure that our community's growth does not leave behind existing residents. In this ordinance, we'll make sure that families who have the income to afford a Whitehall home are not forced out of our community because they've earned that well-funded income. It protects moms who receive child support, seniors living on fixed income, and veterans who are entitled to government benefits for the service and sacrifice they made for our country. These are our neighbors. And unfortunately, local research shows that income discrimination is ubiquitous in Franklin County. Over 60% of our landlords currently refuse to accept child support income. Over 35% refuse supplemental security income for disabled households, and at least 40% refuse rental assistance for parents. Because of this extensively documented need and the meritorious purpose behind promoting housing access, source of income laws are routinely upheld as a legitimate exercise of legislative authority to protect citizens from discriminatory practices and policies. The narrow construction of these laws allows landlords to continue to protect their property investment through screening techniques that better property risk, like those basic credit checks, eviction experience, and criminal offense. Whitehall is called the city of pride. It was named that because of the optimism and forward-thinking approach that enshrined it as a young and fast-growing city coming out of the post-World War II era. We are again young and fast-growing. It is bold, responsive, and forward-thinking policies like the one that you will be asked to make tonight in this anti-discrimination ordinance that will continue to serve as a point of pride for our city and for our region. I want to thank you again for your thoughtful deliberations and all the considerations you've made up to today, and I appreciate the efforts we did speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to come speak? Seeing no one, I will move on to our standing committee reports, and our first is Administration of Financial Management Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration of Financial Management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file. We have a number of items to be introduced tonight, and Larry and Chris are going to take care of that for our committee. They do happen to be in the Ministry of Financial, Ministry of Committee anyway. We will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Or I don't think we're meeting next week.
That's good news. I did want to mention before I forget, during the swearing-in ceremony, I got word that my oldest son and his wife welcomed a baby daughter.
Congratulations.
Her name is Katrina Grace Bailey.
Beautiful.
That's all I know.
That's...
That's quite a bit.
That's quite a bit. That's great. Community and Elder Aperture Safety Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Aperture Safety did meet. Our minutes are on file. We have no pending legislation. We will meet again in...
January 4th.
January 11th.
Thank you.
It'll be January 11th, just in case I may need... Community Standards Enforcement Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards Enforcement met last week. Minutes are on file. Someone is going to meet on January 11th.
Thank you. Economic Development Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and good luck next year.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation tonight, and we will meet on January 11th.
Thank you. Public Safety Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Connor. Public Safety also met last week. I was not there. I was on vacation. Thank you all for covering for me. Minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week.
No, January 11th.
That's right, January 11th.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yes, that year was also a combat. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We do have one piece of legislation on the dock tonight, Order Number 137. We'll meet again sometime in January, I think, 11th, which is in three weeks.
Yeah, that's correct. Very good. Thank you, sir. Official Reports. Mayor Magg.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, I'm sorry. I was having a conversation, and then I probably should have asked.
No table talk.
Okay. I would like to have council's favorable consideration on the following ordinances: 113, 114, 115, 119, no, yeah, 119, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, and Resolution 37. Also, I'd just like to make some comments. Dan Miller has been auditor for the city of Whitehall for 10 years, and before that, he was on city council. Dan has been a dedicated and steadfast public official, and I appreciate his service to the city of Whitehall, as well as his support of me and all city officials in serving the public on a daily basis. He's been a friend and has made some of those dreary days that we have all had at one time or another a little brighter. Dan, thank you so much for all you have done, and I wish you success in whatever next comes your way. Thank you. Larry, you've been in your elected position for eight years, and before that, I'm pretty sure you attended almost every city council and committee meeting for at least 95% of the time each year. We could look out and see your face. It was great seeing you. He has always been thoughtful in his deliberations, and you always know where you stand with Larry. Many of you may have noticed his presence at many city events throughout the years. He's knowledgeable, always prepared, and asks questions in order to fully understand legislation and issues. Even in disagreement, Larry's disposition is even, healed, and respectful to others. Thank you, Larry, for your service to our citizens and the city, and I will miss you. Chris Rod... Chris Rodriguez was first elected to city council in 2001, with his term to begin in 2002. Before that, he was a member of the Building and Zoning Building Appeals. He has given over 20 years of service to this city, and he's always remained kind, generous of heart, and caring of his constituents. Chris was my next-door neighbor for nine years, and he was the best neighbor that Rusty and I could ever have. Our children played and grew up together. On Robinwood Avenue, they would go creaking, you know, in the creek and bring home big snapping turtles at ice wearworn business. They would fish. They would play Indiana Jones with the grapevines coming down, and they had a great time. And I'll never forget the first day that you moved in. I knew you were special then, and I wasn't wrong. Chris, you are much loved, and I pray for blessings for you and your family.
Just so you know, that intersection, roughly five houses each direction, there was a total of, what, nine boys, all born within months of each other.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of hell raising going on in that neighborhood.
Us parents were busy, all I can say. It was crazy. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Bevis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Before, I don't have any official report from the city attorney's office, but I would like to echo the mayor's sentiments as it relates to our outgoing elected officials. Larry, I remember the first time we met over at Tim Horton's, and we had a very engaging conversation. I knew who you were at that time. You knew who I was, and I hope that during the time that I've served as your city attorney, that I've served with honor. You've served with honor, and I've enjoyed every moment. Dan, we met first time with the Franklin County, or not the Franklin County, but the Whitehall Democratic Club, and you were a mailman at the time, and it was one of those things that you knew everything about Whitehall, and I listened to everything that you said, and you were very right as it related to every corridor of the city, and I've always appreciated your wisdom and insight. But Chris and my wife said a lot, so I'll be brief on this, but I'll tell you, the way you battled COVID and the way you battled through when you came back, I had respect for you before. My level of respect increased 1,000% because it not only showed the type of man that you are, it showed the type of man that you project to your family, that you project to your children, and to your grandchildren, and it shows that you're a fighter. And the thing that I know about all of us, and it's my military background, even though you are stepping down from this position, you're still going to serve. You're still here in Whitehall. We're still going to fight the good fight and make sure that we are going to seek opportunities that are innovative, that are going to bring Whitehall to the next phase and to the next, the next place in, in 2022, and to the newly elected. I congratulate you for, for seeking public service. It is an honor, and I'm certain that in my office, I will do my very best, which is what Amy Smith said, to serve you in my capacity and serve in a way that, that we bring the city to a place that we all have equity, and we all have fairness, and we are a city that is a fun, livable place that we can live and be, be very proud of, and be the city of opportunity, which is what we are. Next, it's my fervent prayer that as we celebrate Christmas, that we are mindful of the rising cases of COVID, and that it's my prayer, and I'm optimistic to say this, but I just believe in going big, that we don't suffer any more loss of life. No loss of life as it relates to our Christmas celebration, no loss of life in 2022, no loss of life as it relates to this virus, but no loss of life as it relates to crimes of violence and other meaningless acts that seek to divide us and tear us apart. We are better than that, not only as the city of Whitehall, but as the greater community, and I will continue to pray for the city, not only for the city of Whitehall, but for the greater region, because I know that there is a solution, and I know that that solution is within all of our hearts, and I will continue to pray that prayer, not only for this Christmas season, but into the new year, and God bless everyone within the sound of my voice.
Thank you. City Administrator Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report, but much like the mayor and the city attorney, I do want to say a couple words. You know, a lot has been made about the progress that the community has made over the last number of years, whether that was through new developments, housing opportunities, reduction in crime, increase in recreational opportunities, or, you know, simply our community coming together for great community events. And I know all of you travel outside of Whitehall and hear that from people who, you know, maybe didn't have the greatest of opinion of Whitehall a number of years ago, and their opinions are changing, and you're hearing that from not only inside of Whitehall, but outside of Whitehall. You know, in the last number of community surveys that we've done, you know, 80% of Whitehall residents feel that we're heading in the right track. And to Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilperson Morrison, Auditor Miller, that is a direct result of the work and the passion and the dedication that you all have put in, obviously for eight years, for 10 years, and for as long as I've been alive. All kidding aside, to Councilman Rodriguez, you know, I think I've literally known you my entire life. I played ball growing up with your kids and helped you check out movies and family video back in college. I have certainly appreciated our friendship, your dedication to the community, to listen to people, to ask questions, to come to, you know, whether it's this administration or previous administrations, to get your questions answered and to improve all of those processes. Again, the success that Whitehall is experiencing again is a direct result of all of your efforts, and I could not have been prouder to serve with all of you during this time, so thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Greg is not with us this evening.
Yeah, Dan, Dan Miller.
Oh, well, oh, I'm sorry.
I know I've been missing for a while, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dan. Thank you, Mayor. Auditor Miller.
I'm going to cover all of you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Magg for encouraging me to do this job, and over these years, she has been my mentor and my friend. This has been an experience of a lifetime for me. What we have accomplished in the last 10 years has changed the face of Whitehall for the better. 10 years ago, people would ridicule the city as a dangerous place to live. Crime has decreased dramatically under the guidance of Chief Crispin and the dedicated officers of the Whitehall PD. 10 years ago, businesses didn't want to come here. Director Woodruff has overseen the development of the city, and we've had, had an increase in the number of corporations and small businesses that moved into our city. Today, our parks are top-notch, thanks to the leadership of Shantel. They're the crown jewels of the city. The Whitehall Fire Department has been on the front line of the COVID pandemic and has seen firsthand the devastation this has caused to our citizens. I would like to thank Michael Visens for his wise counsel and the many council members that I had to furnish to work with for their part in this success. I would like to thank the citizens of Whitehall for electing me to this position. It is you who have worked so hard for these past 10 years. I'd like to thank my staff and all their help in making my time as officer so productive. I would like to single out two of my employees, Michelle Carberry and Aaron Scott, for sticking me, sticking, sticking with me to keep the office running while everybody was working remotely. They came in every day to make sure that the finances of the city didn't lag. Our treasurer, Steve Quinsell, was also part of that group. I would ream if I didn't recognize all the hard-working employees in the city that come here every day and make all this happen. And last but not least, I'd like to give a special thank you to my wife, who put up, put in many hours to get me elected and has put up with my adversaries while performing my duties. It's been, it hasn't been an easy job, but it's had its rewards. I'm looking to forward to having more free time on my hands. Good night, and God bless.
And speaking for Diane, she said she was glad to have you out of the house.
Thank you. Treasurer Quinsell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight, however, I would like to join everyone else in thanking Dan and Chris and Larry for their service, and I would like to also publicly congratulate the newly elected and returning council members from each ward, and also make the public aware that history was made here tonight. Bob Dylan wrote a song called "The Times They Are A-Changin'. As of January, when we all come back in here, there were... As of January, when we all come back in here, there will be seven members of council, four of them will be women. So congratulations, ladies.
Thank you. The following reports, official reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. The Treasurer's Investment Report for November 2021, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for November 2021, the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for November 2021, and the Mayor's Report to Council for November 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have three items listed. The agenda for the December 16th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting, the minutes for the December 9th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting, and the minutes for the December 16th, 2021 Planning Commission Meetings. At this time, we do have a public hearing for Ordinance 121, 2021, amending Section 1122-02 titled zoning map at districts and creating 1123.11 titled commercial corridor zoning districts and declaring an emergency. At this time, I will open this public hearing at 7:31. For Ordinance 121, 2021, and will the applicants please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Zach Woodruff, City Administrator with the city of Whitehall. I do have Jason Sui with OHM Advisors with us this evening. We made a presentation to City Council a number of weeks ago that you'll recall regarding the commercial overlay or the commercial corridor update that we've been working on. We presented at a town hall meeting, we presented at a planning commission meeting, and have made a number of changes that I will let Jason get into, but I do believe that we have reached out and listened to residents and heard concerns that they had and made adjustments where we could to satisfy some of their concerns. With that, I will turn to Jason.
Thanks, Council, for having me back tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions after and or during this brief presentation. I won't go through the entire process again, as we pretty much have a similar document as we did when we brought this forward to you a month and a half ago or so. The differences that I'm going to show you right now are in response to the town hall meeting and the planning commission and some specific concerns that were raised that we wanted to address. What we have shown you before, this is the previous zoning district, one of the concerns that was raised was in particular was the way that some of these districts interface with existing residential districts. And so what we did is we made slight adjustments to the map in order to accommodate that. One thing I do want to remind everyone who are on council and in the audience tonight is that this is step one of a two-part process. We are just dealing with the commercial corridors in this step, trying to get the complexities of having those come into alignment with the community vision as passed a few years ago. We will then be going back and dealing with all the other districts and a whole bunch of administrative stuff that, you know, is important, but can sort of bog down the process because it has to do with just all the nuts and bolts of the way that approval process works through the zoning. So all of that will get dealt with next year, but right now we're just dealing with these corridors. So anyway, this is the map you saw before, and what we did is we changed it, and I'm going to go back and forth so you can see. The one I want to point your attention to is on South Hamilton Road. There is a small section that was going a little bit further to the east than some residents were comfortable with, and it made perfect sense to end it at Valerie, so we just took a few parcels out there. It's real hard to see on that map because it's just a little slant, but we did do that. The other portion that is a little more noticeable is the north part of, upon the Community Crossroads District at the gateway from the west end of the city on Main Street. What we did is we changed everything on the north side of Main, as you'll see, that will flip to the color pink. Oops, there we go. And all of that is now in the East Main Street District, just has slightly different standards, one of which is that there's an overall lower, smaller height overall for the district as far as the upper limit. We do have a number of text changes as well. Before I do that, are there any questions about the updated zoning districts or anything else in the process? Okay, well, let me just quickly go through these. A lot of ones, I'm sorry, I apologize. As I mentioned, you revised some of the boundaries from the initial document that you saw and just one of those. What we mostly focused on in order to help get a sense of not just distance, but also the overall scale of what these districts would be about for the residents that are above those, we went through and we set up a criteria for setbacks versus height. And as you'll see here, it gradually makes as you get further away from a voting residential district, the buildings are a lot bigger tall. Buildings have to have at least a forty-foot setback from a voting residential district, so physically there will be no part of the building in that thirty feet. And then what we've done is anything within seventy-five feet of a residential district can only be three stories in height. Everything, and that's the portion of the building we've done. The portion of building of a hundred feet can only be four stories in height. So essentially, the further away we get, the taller the buildings can get, and that ideally will have a very little negative impact on anything that's adjacent to that. You're starting to really get, you know, much lower sightlines and a pretty substantial distance. So hopefully that takes care of primary concern people have with that. But we all, I'm sure.
And when you say a portion of that building, we're going seventy-five feet for three stories, but then that building could progress out a hundred feet or more on that property up to four stories.
That's correct. So if at ninety, if a portion of the building was at ninety feet, that could be a four-story, but the closer you get to that seventy-five, they don't have to drop to three stories. That's correct.
Thank you.
And then what we did in the Community Crossroads Districts, which are the newest dense districts, as you know, in the really key locations that have mostly larger scale parcels and existing ongoing redevelopment, we had, within one hundred and twenty-five feet of a residential district, it could go to five stories, and then we did put a maximum in here of twelve stories, which is probably the practical limit as high as a building would go. Will that happen anytime soon? I don't know. Guessing it's probably going to be more along the scale of development that you're seeing already on Main Street, but, you know, that's a limit that we think is a reasonable construction limit based on things we've seen elsewhere throughout the central area. So that basically will allow those taller buildings to only be at a distance from anybody residential, more focused around the actual crossroads and push her where it's now large-scale commercial development.
The other thing that I did want to point out is that in addition to this distance, if the council will recall, all of the parking for any use has to be to the side of the route. So, you know, as again, we use the shopping center that's at Collingwood and Main today where it's all parking and then buildings, well, and then if that was being developed after this code, the buildings would be all pulled up to along the street and the parking would be then to rear. So in practical application, these buildings will potentially be even further away because of that requirement to have the parking in the rear.
And then the final element of change in the text is to give residents greater assurance based on the areas where any commercial district that we are now zoning to is a voting residential. There is also going to be a six-foot-tall fence required, as well as cover beams at a minimum of twelve feet tall, in order to create a little bit more screening. In general, that's more than is required in between residential districts and commercial districts now. I can't say in every case because of, you know, the variations in related zoning that happened over the years, but overall, as far as a base requirement, that is definitely moving to a more aggressive standard in order to require that there is a more significant visual and physical separation between residential and whatever is mixed use for commercial development.
So again, to piggyback on that, if we were, just for comparison, if we were talking about deciduous trees versus evergreen, we would be talking in terms of a four- or five-inch caliber requirement, a much larger tree. Talking with landscape architects and landscape engineers, that's not how you measure evergreen trees, hence the height, but you're talking about a tree that will be already a much more mature tree, so a six-foot bench with a twelve-foot tree behind it.
And then we will say that this is sort of the minimum requirement that we want to make sure that we have a bit of a buffer between those different uses. That being said, when we go into the second part of this code update next year, we're going to be looking at fences and landscaping requirements in much greater detail, and that'll take sort of a more global look at the way that works overall. So this is really to give assurances now, we're not going to leave that out. That being said, we have a lot more to come when we get into that level of information.
With those changes, are there any additional questions from council?
I have no questions. I just want to say it looks like there's been a lot of good thought on it.
The good thought, I'm sure you will only come from Jason.
I'd like to look at that with you.
I want to thank you for working with the residents. It's very, very big.
Yeah, Zach, I want to thank you for the process because when this all started almost eighteen years ago and it's morphed and grown, I think it's indicative of what City Hall is like today, and I referred last week as Whitehall being, you know, the rebirth of, it's through City Hall's efforts, and now you have the community engaging, much like back when we built the new schools. The community really engaged, well, within the last few months, the community has engaged, so this process is starting to work, so, you know, we're growing. And like you said, people are noticing that in our suburb areas around us, so, but I want to thank you because a lot of the things we were talking about, we're now seeing up there as part of your zoning changes. So thank you guys so much, and thank the community for getting involved.
Okay, I think that's one presentation we formally have today, sir.
Okay, well, I will just follow the.
Absolutely, I know that you're going to, go ahead.
Yes, I'll just follow the proceeds. So any additional comments for the council? I think that pretty well, no, okay. Are there any opponents who would like to speak, the opposition of this? Are there any proponents who would like to speak in favor of this? Ms. Allen, do you have any correspondence sent to? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Dixon.
Want me to speak from here?
No, please.
From here?
Yes, that'd be fine. Name and address for the record.
Gerald Dixon, 3877 10th Street. I've got breathing issues, so the mask and my age makes me breathy. Pardon. First of all, looking at these updates, I'm going to say thank you, Zach, and then Mr. Sui for these. I think this is a show of what can happen when the citizens come forward with an issue and they, you know, let the government know and the government works with them to make things amenable to everybody. I understand that the citizens work with the government and the government is nothing without citizens, so I think this is a great show of effort for that that took place. Larger thing, and I'm saying for a moment because I want this to be on the record. You know, I brought Jane Jacobs' book into City Hall eleven years ago. I showed it to Zach, he was the Community Affairs Coordinator, I saw his car, and I spoke about it with Mr. Sui, about how, you know, things, there has to be density, there has to be more walkable city, and the mayor talked about it and others as well, and indeed, those are a part of attendance in Ms. Jacobs' book. I think that, and as I've just recently talked with a fellow citizen, particularly on Waverwood Avenue, you know, I saw when I lived in New York City, Manhattan at one time was fields and woods. One of the first governors of New York City, Peter Stiles, had a pear tree, you know, pear trees, growing pear trees around Fourteenth Street, and none of them could ever imagine what would become of their little quaint city, but they realized because Manhattan's finite, that they had to grow out, and so they started taking on growing. And the fact is, until the elevator and steel came into a, you know, world, they then realized they could go up. And the fact of the matter is, and I understand this, is that land is finite. You cannot keep on building things, pouting out and out and take up all the farmland. You have to at some point unless people stop having children. That's not going to happen, so then you have to start building up. And I understand that about this plan, and I always have. The problem is, is for instance, when the citizens came and spoke about it, and that was a buddy of, against their neighbor, they had a right to, they had a right to resist the flow of labor. It's their town, it's not the officials, it's their town. And I think that this was a great meeting of that, of those two entities, trying to come up with something that worked, because the fact of the matter is, is this has to happen in order to save, rip the land and save humanity. You cannot use up all the farmland where you have to grow food or speed. So I approve of this in many, many ways, and as long as the government continues to listen to the people in the implementation of it, I think that it's going to be a nice symbiotic relationship, but it has to be that. That was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, do you have any correspondence to council officer regarding Ordinance 121, 2021?
Yes, sir.
There is none, okay. If there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 121, 2021 at 7:46. Ms. Allen, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have several items this evening, first one being Ordinance 113, 2021, amending Chapter 541 of the City of Whitehall Codified Ordances entitled Offenses Against Persons, Adding Source of Income to Provide Care Housing Opportunities for Individuals and Their Families Regardless of Source of Income to Pay for Such Accommodations.
Mr. President, we should introduce Ordinance 113, 2021, move for its adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez, introducing Ordinance 113, 2021, and move for its adoption. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Morrison?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance 113, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance 114, 2021, making appropriation for current general fund 101 expenses, street 201 expenses, and state highway materials 211, expenses during the period from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, in the total sum of $37,919,628 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 114, 2021, move for its adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison, introduce for adoption Ordinance 114, 2021. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance 114, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance 115, 2021, authorizing approving the following changes to 161.38 and declaring an emergency as amended as submitted.
Mr. President, we should introduce Ordinance 115, 2021, as amended as submitted and move for the adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez, for the adoption of Orders 115, 2021, amended as submitted. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Allen, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heff?
Ordinance 115, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance 119, 2021, making appropriation for certain special revenue internal service judiciary accounts for the calendar year 2022 in the total sum of $15,746,287.28.
You didn't finish.
Don't you declare?
Oh, and declare an emergency, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
They should just go home.
Mr. President, we should introduce Ordinance 119, 2021, and move for its adoption.
Second.
Now, motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez, to pass Orders 119, 2021. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Allen, please call roll. Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Ordinance one nineteen, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, amending section eleven twenty-two oh two titled zoning map and districts and creating eleven twenty-three point eleven titled commercial corridor zoning districts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one and move for its adoption.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez has made a motion to introduce ordinance one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one and motion for its adoption, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, accepting the addition of partial zero nine zero 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 five four ten and partial zero nine zero 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 one nine seven four to lot seven, accepting the subdivision of lot seven to the office at Norton Crossing.
Mr. President, we should introduce ordinance one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one and move for adoption.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez to introduce ordinance one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Under second reading, we have several items listed this evening. First is ordinance one twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, which will be read by title only and has a public hearing scheduled for January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Amending the zoning map attached, attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located at thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue. Partial numbers zero nine zero 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 two, one twenty-two, zero nine zero dash zero zero one eight ninety, zero nine zero dash zero zero zero, zero 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 three, six forty, zero nine zero dash zero zero one nine hundred, zero nine zero dash zero zero two forty-five, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, zero zero three, six thirty-eight, zero nine zero dash zero zero eight two forty, from R three residential district and general commerce district, G C D, to A two apartment district, property owned by Mamet Company, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Ordinance one twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, public hearing also scheduled for January fourth will be read by title only this evening. Amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three point oh six C seven to allow apartment dwelling structure containing more than twelve dwelling units on a property located on thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue. Partial numbers zero nine zero dash zero zero two, one twenty-two, zero nine zero dash zero zero one eight ninety, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six forty, zero nine zero dash zero zero one nine hundred, zero nine zero dash zero zero two, four eighty-five, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero dash zero zero eight, two forty, property owned by Mamet Company, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Ordinance one twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one will also be read by title only with a public hearing scheduled for January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall. It is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three point ten C one to allow oil development to operate a restaurant establishment that they drive through where the property located at thirty-six sixty-one East Main Street. Partial zero nine zero dash zero zero eight, three seventy-two dash zero zero, owned by S R I Real Estate Properties LLC. Last ordinance will be read for title only would be one thirty, twenty-twenty-one, also has a public hearing scheduled for January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. And that is amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a permit under eleven twenty-three point ten C one to allow M S Consultants Incorporated to operate a restaurant establishment that they drive through where the property located at thirty-six forty-six East Broad Street. Partial number zero nine zero dash zero zero zero, one nine three dash zero zero, owned by Gilligan Company LLC. Resolution thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, appointing a member to the Board of Directors of the Jefferson Township Whitehall Joint Economic Development District.
Mr. President, we'd like to introduce resolution thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez to introduce resolution thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one and move to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Under first reading, we have ordinance one thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing approving the mayor to sign a contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local seventeen twenty-nine, for the contract term January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance one thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one and to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, making approving a substantial appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars of unappropriated monies in the general fund one oh one to utilities expense account one oh one point nine five oh, point fifty-three thousand, eight hundred.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, move for the adoption, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance one thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one and to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance one thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing approving an appropriation transfer in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars from unappropriated monies in the H R general expense account one oh one point four fifty point fifty-one thousand two hundred to the I T tech salary count one oh one point two hundred point fifty-one thousand, six fifty, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance one thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one and suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been adopted.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing approving appropriation transfers in the total sum of forty-seven thousand dollars from the following general fund one oh one expense accounts to the police salary count one oh one point nine sixty, point fifty-one thousand two hundred and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, we should introduce ordinance one thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez to introduce ordinance one thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one and to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison's move to adopt, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes. Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing approving an appropriation transfer in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars from unap, from appropriate monies in the records clerk salary count one oh one point nine sixty, point fifty-one thousand five hundred to the ready operator salary count one oh one point nine sixty, point fifty-one, three hundred and declaring an emergency.
As Clark Bruce would say, pacify them all.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
And thank you. Mr. Rodriguez with a second. Mr. Morrison has introduced to ordinance one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one with the further request to suspend rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one has been, had had the rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Caught myself. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez and the second of Mr. Morrison has now moved to the adoption of one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, amending one sixty-one point thirty-nine of the codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, titled compensation for casual and personal service contract employees in the Parks and Recreation Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, we should introduce ordinance one thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison with a second. Mr. Rodriguez has introduced ordinance one thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one and with a request also to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Resolution thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, resolving to approve then announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Larry, are you starting to feel like Bronhage? Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez with a second and Mr. Morrison has introduced resolution thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Resolution thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is resolution thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation, COSIC, for demolition of services on the property formerly known as the Woodland condominiums and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, we should introduce resolution thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez to introduce resolution thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one and to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heff?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Long, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Resolution 37-2021 has been adopted. This now brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and once again, I invite folks to come forward. Please take your name and address to the record, and that would be if you had something to talk about that you've not talked about on the first poll public.
Why don't we pull out that chair? I take a strong resemblance that, uh... Gerald Dixon, 3877, 30th Street. I would like to take my opportunity to thank the gentlemen for their service, Mr. Miller, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. Morrison, all of you. I appreciate, and I know that that is service and the community as well as I thank you for it. Just as a slight addition to what Mr. Quinzel said earlier about history being made, unless I'm wrong, I believe I'm the first openly gay person elected to Calipso in Wayne. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe someone knows me somewhere else, but if not, it's me. Anyway. I first started utilizing poll publics in 2009, probably much to the chagrin of a lot of folks here, and there's only a few left who were actually here when we started coming and speaking to council. And that's a lot of poll publics I remember. Karl Marx was said, to have said on his deathbed when they asked him if he had anything else to say, he said, "Last words are for people who didn't speak enough in life." So it is, and I had nothing else to add on my last poll public. All I would say is Merry Christmas to all of you who celebrated, and to the rest of you, Happy Festivals.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Anyone else? With that, we'll move to our community date board. Yes, I'll look at you, Karen.
You did look at me. You know, before long, it'll be the Easter night.
Oh, yeah.
You have to have something to look forward to that we can actually do, right?
Something will be able to do.
We can do.
Oh, gee.
Anything else for community date board? Well, then we'll go to poll council. I'd like to start with Mr. Bailey this evening.
Oh, wow. So you two guys had to pay attention tonight. You're not used to that.
Yeah, couldn't take a nap.
That's right. Um, I really liked what all of you said. I mean, I echo all those thoughts. Joy, you were dead on on Chris. The thing that I take away from all three of you is friendship, and that's the most important thing for me at this time now. The amount of volunteer work that all three of these guys have done, as long as I can remember, because I've been out there with them, it's incredible. Three quality citizens that you served your community well, and I consider it to be a pleasure to be a part of that with you. Chris, you were my mentor, you and Brent Howard. I reflect back to the eight pieces of legislation on the dog issue, and if you remember that, that was a lot of whiskey, so... I have grandkids that call him Theo, and you can tell them what that means.
Uncle.
Uncle, yeah. Chris is like a brother to me, and that's my takeaway from my time serving the city is that I, I never had a brother, but this man serves that purpose for me, so... Other than that, you know, wish all of you a happy holiday. Remember the reason for the season. And, uh, I love it that the community is engaged on different levels. That's what we've been shooting for. This zoning stuff, a number of us said those exact things in meetings, even in public meetings, so the system's working. Whitehall's growing, things are happening, and you guys did a good job in getting it to go in that direction. And to qualify my thoughts on Dan, I mean, the state, how many awards did the state give you through audits?
Seven from the state and six from the state.
Yeah, drop the mic, right?
I guess.
Not with your camera. You ran out of walls, that's why you're retiring.
So, so the public should be proud of who we are today. And Jerry, now you get to be a part of that, and I hope that, uh, some of the history, as you recall it, you once, and I didn't want to go here, but I'm going to. He once referred to us as a family, and it was a negative, but I'm here to tell you that we do become family because we sort out issues without making it uncomfortable. Larry is a master at it. I love to disagree with Larry because it's the engaging part of that is just, it's, it's just life. It's great, and it's respectful, but I digress, Mr. President.
That's your prerogative. Thank you. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for those that are viewing through social media. Thank you, Jerry Moore, that's out in the audience. I also want to echo, I wrote a couple things, Councilor Morrison and Rodriguez. It has been a pleasure to serve with you guys. I've learned a lot from both of you, and I have nothing but well wishes for you wherever you go. On a personal note, I've had several conversations with you, Chris, and you are everything that Joey talked about. You have a heart and soul and very compassionate, and that is what draws people to you, and I just pray that your light continues to shine. And Larry, I have served with you, I've had conversations with you, I've learned a lot from you. I love our spirited discussions because afterwards, we still have conversations, and I appreciate you and everything you bring to the table, have brought to the table as a counselor, and I've learned a lot from you as well. Dan, I'm the auditor. I just, I remember when I first was elected, I came to your office, and we had some conversations, and so I appreciate the pearls of wisdom that you dropped, and I continue to practice those, so I appreciate your service as well. And to my fellow Alex, Joanna, I hope that we continue to do a great job. And to those that are newly elected, I pray that, um, that we just, that, that this office, we learn through this office, that you accept the training that is offered in this office, and that we can move forward, move the city forward, and be the progressive city that a lot of the surrounding suburbs are looking at and wishing that they were a part of, because I've heard a lot of that. And I always thank the citizens for their input because that's what makes us the type of city that we are. Everybody have a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And lastly, congratulations, Councilor Grandpa, Bob Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Ms. Coniston.
Thank you, Ms. Coniston. I want to thank everybody for coming. Always thank the community. I'm, I'm gonna miss these three gentlemen up here, but what I'm hearing is they've got a little bit of extra free time now. So, you know, these, these three guys have helped me out tremendously in, in the community. I think everybody knows that I've been with the Whitehall Community Celebration Association for many years, but so have they. And so have many of the, the people that are here. We're a family, we're a dysfunctional family. I think most, most families are. Just as Bob said, that, you know what, we can go ahead and we can disagree, and then at the end of the day, we can put pancakes together.
Literally.
Literally, right. The one thing that I do want to mention, and again, you know, I, I am so happy that Joanna and Lori will, will continue being up here. And I look forward to Mr. Quinzel being our auditor. We've got some, some good people that, that are remaining, some good people that are leaving. I have a gentleman that I want to talk about tonight, and that's my dad. My dad turns 88 tomorrow.
That's great.
Yes. And I was telling them a little bit earlier that every night I call my dad, and I say, "How are you doing, Dad?", and he says, "I'm still here." And I think that that's what we all have to remember is we are here, and we're here to, to do our best. We're not, I hear people saying, you know, you've got all these women that are gonna be on council now, and you've got, you know, this and this and this. You know what? We're human first. We're humans. And what we need to remember to be is kind humans. And I would think that with the spirit of Christmas and the holiday season, please, all of you, remember that and just kind of smile at your fellow man, your fellow woman. Offer, glad to help a hand if you can. That everybody please be kind to one another.
Thank you. Very nice. Mr. Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow all these statements, first off, thank you, everybody, for watching and for the comments tonight. The mail-in from Jeff and a comment from Jackie in Atlanta, and she's no longer here, and Councilman Dixon. This has been a rather interesting year, a very interesting year. Let's hope that next year is much better. I want to commend Mr. Woodruff and the administrations, Mr. Stevens, and even Mr. Miller for working with our citizens. They did a great job. Think the citizens are happy, they've come up and spoke about it, and it's always nice where you can get government and residents together. I am a resident, and yes, I'm part of government, but I am still a resident. And, uh, it's nice when one group comes together as a whole, and we go forward. We are going forward. We are going forward. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Dixon, Councilperson Smith, she's not here, Councilperson Peck, and Councilperson Elmore for swearing in tonight. New City Auditor Steve Quinzel. I know you'll do a good job. That's a big sheet, you know. This guy came up one night and applied, and we're sitting back here, and... Go, Dan Miller. I'm gonna interview Dan Miller tonight. I had no idea that you applied for a vacant council-at-large position in the back. And, uh, you did well. You did well. You went on to become our auditor, and a very, very good one at that. We've been blessed to have two auditors since I've been up here, and you did a damn good job, Dan, and I'm proud of you. I know we go back to the 90s. Don't really say what year we went back, we go back to.
Eighteen.
Oh, goodness, but we go back a few years, and I'm proud to sit up here with you. You've, you did an outstanding job for our community. My kids love you. They always go by your house and they say that, so I wish you the best. I know you and Diana are gonna do really, really great. I wish you a Merry Christmas and a family. Larry Morrison, you're one of a kind, man. Just, just one of a kind. I see that, see you sitting back in the back all these years, and not knowing what you're thinking, but you see a head nod, or everybody like this. You and Charlie sitting back there, Paul Werder back there, and I was back here before I was up here. You do a really good job. You did a phenomenal job for this council, for this community. You aired your opinions, you gave your thoughts, you did not back down, you stood firm, you have morals, you have values and principles. And that, my friend, is hard to find in an individual today. And I thank you for sitting up here with me, being a friend, being a part of a family. And I wish you and Laura, your beautiful wife sitting in the audience, the best, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas. Probably the toughest one. I'm glad you're here. Couple days this year, we didn't know if you were gonna be here. Yep, so, yeah, it's been a tough year, so, um, we all feel that way about you. We all truly feel that way about you. A lot of prayers. And you took me under your wing, as you did, kind of like Bob, and Brent as well. And you, and you kind of showed us the way, showed me the way, and paved the way. Took my kids, my two little girls, my girls, um, I told you, she's here. And you love them like your own kids, and they always go, "There's Chris Rodriguez, there's Chris Rodriguez, Daddy, go talk to Chris Rodriguez." And, uh, you're a unique individual that I thank God that I've had the opportunity in my life to know and to continue to know. Our friendship's more like, I'll say brothers, so we don't have to go real quiet, so... And I love you like a brother. You're a great friend. I wish you and Carol and the kids a Merry Christmas. With that, girls, Daddy loves you. He's still here. Thank God. It's been a tough year. We've lost many, many people this year. Seven months ago this night, about this time, that I lost my mother, so it's a, it's a tough time for our family. We're getting through it, and God bless everybody and Merry Christmas to everybody. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ann.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like everything's been said, so I will keep it short. Thank you, everybody tuning in from home, and everybody that is here. Thank you for those that got up and spoke during the poll public. Thank you to Councilor Morrison and Councilor Rodriguez, as well as Auditor Miller, for your years of service. It's been great. I've learned a lot from you over these, my first term. I hope everybody has a really good next two weeks, and everybody stays safe and hopefully, and that's all. See you next year.
Thank you. Councilman Morrison.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, first of all, I'd like to start off with my brief explanation of my no vote on 113. It has nothing to do with me being against social programming. I seem to be a stickler on how things are worded, and I was not pleased with the way it was worded. That was the reason for my no vote, not that I disagreed with helping people with less economic, but, uh, presence. So, that aside, I thank everybody for showing up for the swearing-in. I thank everybody that tunes in. And I especially thank everybody up here. It's been a privilege working with them. And I am confident that Mr. Dixon and Amy Smith will fulfill these seats abundantly. And I guess there's times, and I believe that Mr. Woodruff could attest to my pigheadedness, only second to...
Not once.
Only, only second to my lovely bride back here, Laura. But, uh, we've had a good time. I appreciate you all. That's it.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Where do you start? I wrote a few things down. One thing I'm gonna miss is Heck Yes. I want to say Merry Christmas, I forget that. I wrote down here, putting the unity in community. I think that's what we do up here with the administration, everyone out there, and it's, uh... Been fun. Amy Grant has a song, "How the Years Go By", oh, How the Years Go By. And, um, yeah, we've gone, had to make some notes because I'm forgetful. We've gone through some difficult times and some prosperous, some prosperous times. This pandemic has been a challenge, yet we persevere. That has been, is a result of good, strong relationships between the administration and council. Just look in any direction. The growth and revitalization of Whitehall has been phenomenal. It has been an honor to serve the community and be part of this office, and yet, there's so much more to be done. The dictionary defines hope as a feeling of expectation and desire for a certain thing to happen. So hoping for good weather, hoping you get a promotion, hoping Buckeyes win, for example. Hebrews 11:1 says, "Faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen." So I truly believe Whitehall's best days lie ahead. I have hope and faith in the administration and council, both the existing and the incoming, to move Whitehall forward. Thank you for your support, and especially for your prayers over this past year. So... Here comes our card. Believe it or not, in high school, I was one of 16 people in a crowd. Pretty elite group. At the end of my senior year, I was one of 78 people, um, chosen to go to Europe for three weeks on a scene tour. And, um... I'm gonna try and do this, but, um, there's a COVID shot in my voice to hell. But you guys are gonna hear something that, you know, I don't think anybody behind the scenes, my grandkids, gets to hear, and that's me singing. So, Rosemary Clooney, "The Time Flies". And I'm probably not gonna get through the same one. So, "Life begins and spirits rise, and they become memories that vaporize. And the vapor becomes the dreams we devise. And while we are dreaming, time flies. Night turns to dawn, and then to bright skies. And bright skies to picnics on warm July's. Too deep under autumn's and winter goodbyes. And while we are dreaming, time flies." Thank you, everybody.
The second will be on your album, Chris. It's Larry's turn.
Yeah, come on, Larry. You gonna sing?
I would be sorry, sorry. Wife said no.
She said no. Wait. So, that, Chris, that is very hard, and I'm gonna attempt to back that up. But my, my closing comments, I want to thank Dan as well for your many years of service and dedication to the city. Obviously, your work can be measured by the many accolades and awards that you've been presented over the years, and more importantly, earned. You know, those are just not given out. Those, those are earned, so you should be very proud, and the citizens of Whitehall should be very, very proud that you put that level of dedication into your work and into your office because we all benefit from it. That said, you've just been a true asset to the city and will be very missed. And I thank you. As far as my fellow council members, it's with a heavy heart, much gratitude, that I bid both Chris and Larry a fond farewell and best wishes from their tenure on Whitehall City Council. They have both demonstrated their deep devotion and commitment to the residents and city in not only maintaining a level of excellence Whitehall has prided itself on, but also helping guide the city into the exciting future we're all enjoying with more to come. With leadership comes responsibility, and Chris and Larry have both embraced their charge, which has been evident in their deeds and actions. Chris and Larry, you'll both be missed, and please know, Whitehall's a better city having had you both being integral stewards of the city's best interests. I thank you all, I thank you both, and best wishes. And with that, I have got nothing further.
Mr. President, for the last time, I'd like to move for, uh, adjourn. Move to adjourn.
I would like to make a comment prior to adjournment, and I felt that you were for your service.
Second. Thank you. The devotion by Mr. Rodriguez, I'd like to bring Mr. Morrison to adjourn. Any discussion? Ms. Hogg.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Heck, yes.
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heck?
Peck?
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight thirty.
Hey, Lori? Hey, Lori?